First item on the agenda is an executive session. Do I have a motion that we go into executive session? Motion by Councilman Reader. I have a second. Second by Councilman Smith. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. We will go into executive session and we will be as brief as we can.
We got to come out of the other window.
But we're going to close, we got to get out of executive session. I'd like to call it a meeting back to order. County Council went into executive session for the aforementioned items. Do I have a motion that we come out of executive session? Motion by Councilman Smith. Seconded by Councilman Reeder. Any discussion? All in favor? We are now out of executive session. Item number two, adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Vice Chair. Seconded by Councilman Reeder. Any discussion? All in favor? We are adjourned from that meeting. And we will reconvene at six o'clock. Motion by Councilman Fulmer, second by Councilman Scurry, any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Item number two, are there any additions, deletions to the agenda? I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented. Motion by Vice Chair, second by Councilman Reader, any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Item number three, special recognition, one of our fun times, St. Phillips Fire Department, Mr. Brandon Wicker and Tommy Long. Well, we only get Mr. Wicker, that's all right, too.
I want to thank y'all again for allowing us to do this, recognize our volunteers. Tonight, we're going to recognize the St. Phillips Fire Department, Station 11. They have nineteen members, ten of them are interior firefighters. They support St. Phillips Church Summer Camp every year. They also have hosted Kamatsu Family Kids Day at the station. They answered one hundred fifty calls in 2024 and ran one hundred and forty so far this year. They have several members with over forty years of service, several with over thirty years. They also have come across several younger members that are getting their education through the Career Center. And every year, they host a barbecue chicken fundraiser.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Several members with a lot of years in there. Can't say it enough, our volunteers are our backbone. I don't know what we'd do without you. Thank you for all you do for our community. God bless y'all. Item number four, ordinance number ten dash one oh one dash two twenty twenty five, an ordinance amending the Newberry County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 154, Newberry County Land Development Regulations, adopting updated standards for the subdivision and development of land in Newberry County and providing for the repeal of all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith to the extent necessary to give this chapter full force and effect. Any changes on this, Mr. Schacher?
No, sir. We had some discussion about a couple of items because I want to make sure I addressed those at our last meeting, you know, possible changes. And y'all had asked staff to look into a few things, and two of them specifically related to the land development regulations. One was regarding the timeline that substantial progress has to be made following a preliminary plat approval. If y'all remember the process, there's sketch plan, there is preliminary plat approval, and with preliminary plat approval, the developer has the ability to begin installing infrastructure. Well, there's a shot clock there, and they have to demonstrate significant progress in a twenty-four month period. A suggestion was made that we trim that down to twelve months. And of course, you know, it's council's decision, you know, how we handle that. We just felt like twelve was pretty tight in the twenty-four months. You know, a significant amount of engineering goes into projects like this. There's bidding and negotiation that goes into it with contractors, and then there's the installation of the infrastructure. So if y'all are comfortable with it, you can move forward with the ordinance as is, which has twenty-four months in it. If not, that would require an amendment. And again, this is that timeframe after preliminary plat approval that a proposed developer on the development has to make progress on the installation of infrastructure. And it would either you have to have it to a point where it is ready for final plat, or you have to have fifty percent of the infrastructure installed. Another item that was discussed were wetlands. And, you know, there are really kind of basically two types of wetlands. There are jurisdictional wetlands which fall under federal regulations, and the authority that is responsible for ensuring that the requirements of those regulations are met is the Army Corps of Engineers. And there's, you know, federal preemption essentially applies with jurisdictional wetlands. Then there are other types of wetlands that are non-jurisdictional, but you look at them and they're wetlands. And I guess our feeling about, you know, there was some discussion about possibly prohibiting mitigation, is that we felt like with the requirements of the LDR, the Land Development Regulations, this ordinance, and then, I guess it's a presumption, but that y'all pass the ordinance that's later on the agenda that would require development agreements for all residential subdivisions of twenty-five acres or more of highland, that with those two tools, that you would have the ability to have those wetlands and the planning commission identified on the plat, and then a decision could be made, are we going to allow those wetlands to be altered or not, if they're proposed to be? And we felt like that gave the county some flexibility to determine, you know, whether or not those wetlands would be, you know, would remain intact and would be prohibited from any form of mitigation, or if mitigation would be permitted. So that was our recommendation, so there were no changes in the ordinance made. But again, if y'all would like to see either of those items or both modified, it could be done, it would just be an amendment here as part of the third reading approval.
Hearing that, do we have a motion that this be third reading? Motion by Councilman Reader, second by Councilman Scurry, any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. All right, item number five, ordinance number one zero dash zero two dash two zero two five, an ordinance to amend the text of the Official Zoning Ordinance of Newberry County, South Carolina, as codified in Chapter 153 of the Code of Ordinances of Newberry County, South Carolina, to establish a new zoning district, RMPD, the Residential Master Plan District. This is the third reading. Mr. Schacher, any changes on this?
Similar to the LDR, there are no changes contained within the ordinance from the last meeting, although there were changes that were made through the adoption, the review process at the planning commission level and at the council level, and then the adoption process. But let me just, if you don't mind, mention a few of the items that were discussed as possible changes, because that will help y'all decide if you want to amend the ordinance as part of third reading approval. One of the items that was discussed was possibly rethinking the zero-lot line dwellings within, as a potential allowable permitted use within RMPD, this proposed zoning district. The reason that we didn't remove that was because attached units are allowed. And I guess we sort of felt like when you're, if you looked at it like a spectrum, on one side, you've got attached units like townhouses or apartment complexes, and then on another, you've got low-density detached, which is permitted. Zero-lot line is sort of in the middle, and these, again, would be detached, single-family dwellings that like have a, I would describe it as like a narrow alleyway between them. I will tell you, like attached units pursuant to the building code, they would have to have a one-hour fire-rated wall between them. Yeah, like apartments would, so that basically that wall dividing two townhomes or apartments at a minimum, it's got to have a one-hour separation. The same would be true for these detached, zero-lot line structures that have, you know, whatever the width of that alley is between the units. That's why we left it in there, it can certainly be removed, but we didn't make that change prior to, you know, sending the packet out to y'all. Another item that was raised, and I think that this was wise, if the timeframe would have been changed on the LDR from twenty-four months to twelve, you'd probably want that reflected in the RMPD as well, because it has the twenty-four-month requirement for essentially demonstrated progress. So we thought those two things should be consistent. We'd recommend particularly now that y'all have approved the LDR with the twenty-four months, that you would do the same for the RMPD. You don't have to do it that way, but that was the thinking behind it. And then the third item was the, you know, there's a maximum density of six dwelling units per acre in the ordinance, and you know, we started at eight, and it was eight units per the total acreage. So if it's a hundred acre track, you take a hundred times eight, and that would tell you the maximum number of dwellings on the property. You know, that got pared down to eight per developable acres, and with the open space requirements and buffer requirements, in some cases, that could be a forty percent reduction in the number or more of the number of units. And then we further took that down to six dwellings per developable acre. We would just recommend to y'all, we've got residential zoning districts now that have a maximum of four, and we just recommend that we have at least a zoning classification in our toolbox that allows a slightly higher density. That was the thinking behind it. But again, it's just a maximum, it doesn't mean that every property that is zoned, RMPD, could have six.
Council still has the final say-so on what is allowed and what is not.
That's right, and the planning commission would review it and make a recommendation to y'all. And again, this is a master planning approach to zoning, so I mean, you will have a lot more information and details about proposals that you'll review, including the density, and you can make decisions on, and the planning commission can, in terms of their recommendation on what they want to allow, given the characteristics of the property and the area the property's located in. That was the thinking. But again, that's something that council can change as part of third reading. But my recollection was those were the third items that were discussed as possible changes.
Gotcha. I know a lot of hard work went in for staff, the planning commission did a great job, and a lot of work put into it, so. Do I have a motion to be third reading? Motion by Councilman Smith, second, second by Councilman Johnson, any discussion?
Yeah, I got some calls from my constituents, so I sent the thing in about reducing the maximum number from six to four, and then all other residential down to two per acre, and then increasing our R2 from one acre per house to two acres, but they didn't like that, so, you know, we can always, through the planning and development thing, we can limit it less than six houses, so I think we need to go ahead and put this in place, see if we'll have it in place before the war tour begins.
Again, council has the final say-so in what can and cannot be allowed in these districts, so rest assured, we have our best interests at heart. Any other discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Item number six, ordinance number one one dash zero one dash two zero two five, an ordinance amending the text of the Official Zoning Ordinance of Newberry County, South Carolina, as codified in Chapter 153 of the Code of Ordinances of Newberry County, South Carolina, amending Section 153 dot one seven four, PPD, planned development districts, Section 153 dot eighteen, existing vegetation, 153 dot one eighty-two buffers, Section 153 dot one eighty-four landscaping, 153 dot one eighty-five open space, and 153 dot two three one definitions. Any explanation on this?
Yes, sir. Got that for you. And I know, strike and insert, you know. So there are a number of changes in here, and I'm just kind of roll through these, and I know we talked about them in the work session, the planning commissions reviewed it. So section one there in the ordinance, what it's clarifying is that, you know, delineated wetlands is what we're talking about, and that also, we wanted to make sure that planned development district, that's a zoning category that is existing in the county zoning ordinance, that the same procedure that applies to any form of amendment, including minor ones, for the RMPD district that y'all just adopted, applies to PDD. Because previously, we had language in the current ordinance where minor amendments to a planned development district didn't have to come to council for approval. And y'all made it clear you wanted that to be the case with RMPD, so we wanted to make the two things consistent. Again, PDD has a mixed-use requirement, so normally, you would see residential and commercial. RMPD that y'all just approved is all residential, it's exclusively residential. But similar But similar principles with the master plan becoming the zoning of the property. Section two is dealing with existing vegetation, and, you know, we've had some changes here. What council had some discussion about, and what went to the Planning Commission, was some requirements related to land clearing, where if land clearing were done and buffers that are required in the ordinance were not observed, that it could freeze development approvals for a period of time, even if the developer wasn't the one, it was the prior owner that cleared out the property or cleared it. And, you know, in the discussions we had, we really felt like maybe a little more measured approach at first would be better. And certainly, y'all would have an opportunity to evaluate the results. And so what section two proposes to do is that it would just limit land clearing when it is proposed for development as a major subdivision, multifamily residential, or manufactured home park. And in that case, the developer would be required, as part of the development approval process, to have a tree survey done. They'd have to have a qualified individual, that's in subsection B there, conduct the tree survey, and then the zoning administrator would work with them to preserve as many significant trees, and we define what a significant tree is in the ordinance, as possible based on the proposed, you know, the development plan. So this is a little scaled-back approach that, you know, I think, at least at this point in time, would be more acceptable to council and the public. And then, of course, you know, like anything, like y'all have said, these are living, breathing documents, and you always have the opportunity to go in and, you know, revise them if y'all deem that to be necessary, or it's recommended by the Planning Commission. Section three is related to buffers, and this is where, you know, we propose significant perimeter buffer requirements, similar to the RMPD zoning district that y'all just approved. This requires a perimeter buffer of 100 feet along all property lines, including road frontage, that it be undisturbed natural area, that it be maintained in perpetuity by a association or a property manager, and that it not be calculated within the open space requirements for the development. So this 100-foot minimum, because it could be, could be more, 100-foot minimum perimeter buffer would not count towards the required open space for a residential subdivision. We also make it clear, too, that the landscaping requirements in the county's landscape ordinance were, apply within the buffer. And that's why, you know, it's really paramount, and we would recommend to y'all that meetings occur with development of community to encourage them to maintain natural buffers. I think that's the better outcome, and it's also would be more cost-effective for them. So we would like to have those meetings, assuming that these ordinances are adopted by council, to make sure there's awareness of the requirements, and we come up with really common sense solutions for, you know, implementing these things. Section four, we wanted to make sure that when we're talking about plant species in the landscape ordinance, that they're not invasive in South Carolina. So we, there's language added to ensure, or to give us the tools to ensure that that does not occur. And then also, we have some provisions in there that y'all have reviewed, and the Planning Commission for entranceway improvements into developments, you know, related to the landscaping, the signage, the do's and don'ts with lighting, walls and fencing, if that's incorporated, you know, within the entranceway. So that's the, in section four as well. Section five, we propose the addition of residential master plan districts to make it clear that that is a new zoning category that the open space requirements apply to, and that at a minimum for all residential developments in all of our residential categories, that the open space minimum requirement would be 15% of the total property. And again, the perimeter buffer would not count towards that. Section six is a couple of definitions. The Planning Commission had asked that we define what diameter breast height means, and so we've added that definition in. And then a definition y'all have already reviewed is significant tree. And so that, those are two definitions we're proposing to y'all be added into the county's zoning ordinance. And then we've just got language in section seven about conflicting ordinances, and that, you know, conflicts are hereby repealed as through the adoption of the ordinance. So that's it in a nutshell.
Thank you for the explanation. Do I have a motion dispute first reading? Motion by Councilman Smith. Second by Vice Chair Sees. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Item number seven, ordinance 1-1-02-2-025, an ordinance adopting the requirements of South Carolina Local Government Development Agreement Act, creating uniform requirements for the execution and delivery of development agreements by Newberry County Council and other related matters.
Yes, sir. This is another one. So this, this one was reviewed by council, it was reviewed and recommended by the Planning Commission for adoption. And what this ordinance proposes to do is to enable the county to enter into development agreements for residential development projects, and it makes it a requirement when the size of the development is 25 acres of highland or more. And that's actually a requirement or a, I guess, a litmus for the South Carolina Local Government Development Agreement Act, which is Title VI, Chapter 31. And so what this ordinance proposes is that we would require development agreements for subdivisions of that acreage. You don't have ability as a council to apply it to a smaller property. It's going to have to have 25 acres of highland, which we define as something above the 100-foot, I'm sorry, the 100-year flood elevation. It's going to have to have 25 acres of that. And then the ordinance goes further to prescribe the contents of the plan. And the idea there is that the minimum requirements that are in state law, we ensure that that's addressed within the ordinance, as well as, you know, a few additional requirements, you know, that we've reviewed. And that's in the, the Exhibit A, which is incorporated as part of the ordinance. Another major item is the requirement that development fees under the Development Agreement Act per lot be paid to the county. And what we're proposing to y'all is a $5,000 fee per dwelling unit for single-family detached, and for attached, single-family and multifamily residential, that it be $4,250 per unit. And how we arrived at that is we looked at the realistic capital expenditures of the county over a 20-year period, and that was basically like our amortization. And then we looked at the number of dwelling units that the Census Bureau says Newberry County currently has, and calculated the share for new developments based on their percentage of the total housing. So basically, like, for instance, with a 50-unit housing development, if you take the 18,000, I should remember that number, but it's a little over 18,000 housing units in the county. You add the 50 to it, you divide it into 50, you come up with that development share of those expenditures. And that's basically how we came up with the 5,042-50 fee. And typically, with fees like this, there's a reduced fee for multifamily because the cost of serving developments like that is lower, because you're dealing with a smaller geographic area, and the units are attached. That's the logic behind it. It's very, very common.
All right. Thank you for the explanation. Motion dispute first reading? Motion by Chairman, Councilman Johnson. Second by Councilman Reader. Any discussion?
I have one item. If we wanted to raise those fees, will we have to have more discussion, or bring it back, or change it, or can we do it between the first reading and second reading?
You can definitely do it between.
Yeah, you could do it between, between readings, yeah. And there's also, and I failed to mention, there's language in there, we're going forward as part of next year's budget process, which would be, it would be effective July 1, y'all would have the ability to set the development fee rates in the uniform fee schedule that council adopts as part of the budget process, and part of the budget ordinance. So you could set them there. This, this basically would get you through June 30th. And then annually, as part of the budget process, y'all can revisit those fees and determine where you think they need to be set at.
Based on cost increase.
That's right, yeah, yeah. Kind of monitor and maintain, yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Item number eight, ordinance number 1-1-03-2-025, an ordinance authorizing the County of Newberry by Newberry County Council to enter into an option and purchase agreement to evaluate the sale of real property to be determined through negotiations of all purchase terms and conditions for economic development purposes with Project Altair. Anything changed, anything new on this one?
No, sir. I just would just say, anytime that, you know, you're dealing with county property, you know, ordinances you use for like a conveyance, including like an option, so that's why an option's being, I mean, an ordinance is being proposed.
Yes. Motion dispute first reading? Motion by Councilman Johnson. Second by Councilman Fulmer. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. All right. Item number nine, I will be turning it over to Vice Chair Sees to take care of, as I am recusing myself, as I am a part, a party to the principle.
And I, as well, am also a party to that principle as well in this particular discussion, so I will recuse myself as well. Chairman.
Very good.
All right. Moving to item number nine, that's ordinance 11-04-2-025, is an ordinance to enter into agreement between Newberry Electric Co-op Incorporated and Newberry County to exchange property known as tax map number 576-11, for a portion of the property known as tax map number 576-12, and described fully here within. This is first reading. Jeff, you want to give us some info on this?
I'll be glad to. So what's being proposed here, and the reason that it's an ordinance is because property that is owned by the county can only be conveyed, whether it's a simple, or it's a lease, or in the previous agenda, I worked with an option by ordinance, as opposed to a motion of vote would be sufficient to authorize the purchase of property. So an ordinance is proposed to be used, this is a proposed land swap. Where we're talking about is Mid-Carolina Commerce Park. We've got the original industrial park, which is on the west side of SC 773. And then we have Phase Two, which we call Mid-Carolina Commerce Park Two, which is on the east side. And then we have an industry there, and then we have available product there. We've got land that is currently not being used, or has not been yet developed, but it's being marketed for development purposes. There is a 5.11-acre parcel. I call it a corner lot, but technically, it's not on SC 773. It's right as you enter Mid-Carolina Commerce Park One on the left. It's a relatively square piece of property. It was deeded by the county to the Electric Cooperative for a potential future electric substation site to serve demand of existing customers, and also the industrial park, when the industrial park was developed. You know, like anything, things change. And in terms of the existing customer demand on the co-op, and also the development potential on the east side of SC 773, it would be more economical, and from an engineering standpoint, more efficient for a substation to be constructed there. And so what's proposed here is the 5.11 acres that the county deeded to the Electric Co-op back with MCCP 1 was first developed, that it would be deeded back to the county. And in exchange, the county would be 10 acres of property that parallels the transmission line on the east side of SC 773. That, I would call it like a panhandle. Piece of property is 222 feet wide. It has some topographic issues on it, so any setbacks applied to it, which make it very limited in terms of how it could be developed. But it is a good location for an electric substation, you know, to meet current demands and to meet demands there. The 5.11-acre parcel within the Mid-Carolina Commerce Park on the west side, which is what the property that the county would be receiving back, at 6% slope. So we're talking about about a 45-foot elevation change over 600 feet. HUD would classify that for commercial, and you can apply that to industrial within the optimal range for development. So it's got significant, so we feel like this land swap is in the best interest of the county, and recommend all of the ordinance authorizing the execution of this deal.
Thank you, Jeff. We have a motion, this will be first reading? Motion by Councilman Johnson, second by Councilman Skurri. Any discussion?
I'd just say, to me, it just makes perfect sense to get a five-acre lot back on that curve, right as you come into the park, versus a 220 strip, that 220-foot-wide strip that we couldn't use for anything. And so it just makes good financial sense for the county.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Passes. Unanimous of the current members.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Now I'd like to turn the meeting back over to Chairman Shealy.
I appreciate that. Item number 10, consideration of approval of a proposal for inmate food service from Victus Food Service, Captain Daniel Floyd. I'll get to watch TV.
All right. Thank you very much, counsel, for letting me speak. So I've got a PowerPoint, should be on display.
We got it up.
Here we go. And let me go ahead and tell you, I've got the honor to run the jail, and the sheriff gave me that honor almost 10 years ago. And we've been doing a great job, and we've been providing food service by getting the state inmate to come and cook. And that's been going fairly well. We order all the food, we run our own restaurant. Some people say it's better food than nothing. I, we'll let them judge that. But at this point in time, we can't get state inmates. We don't pay for state inmates. Other counties are offering them up to $80 a week to come and work at their counties. We don't do that. We do give them, with CPC, we do give them some phone credit, but that's the only payment that they give. To my left, I have Ray Ortega, who is with CPC and Victus Food Service. He came as well to kind of go over a proposal that they have. And if we can go through the slideshow real quick, he'll kind of give me a... Yeah, here we go. So why a food service vendor? This limits liability and exposure for the sheriff's office in the county. Sanitation and safety requirements, nutritional standards and menus, compliance with operational standards, staffing and trained, certified, staffing that is trained and certified in food safety and facility and equipment needs. We will have two personnel that will be running the kitchen, that will be taking care of all of that for us, instead of us having to do it while working with inmates. What we currently have is officers trying to watch over kitchen staff with inmates. We do all the ordering for a three-week menu. All right. What we currently have is officers trying to watch over the kitchen staff while they cook, prepare meals, and we still have inmates to watch over in all the dorms and everything. We do, we do all the ordering every week. We have a three-week menu. Every week, we order all of our food. We make Walmart runs weekly. Uh, we make Walmart runs weekly, uh, sometimes multiple times during the week and just to save, uh, county money because some things are out of stock at PFG. Our major problems are getting inmates that can cook from SCDC. We can get inmates from SCDC, but it is getting limited and limited and looking for a cook is always hard. Do it. Ordering to stay within budgets, prices continue to soar. We're one detention center. We don't have that, that buying power that a big company like Victus Food Service does have. The time it takes to make the runs to Walmart, to make the runs to the, um, to, I always want to call it merchants, but, um, to make the runs to PFG, uh, for back orders, I mean, multiple times a week, we're getting multiple officers to do this. Uh, this week it was milk. We had to go pick up ten, uh, cases of milk. Um, not having officers continuously in the kitchen, this would give us, uh, kitchen staff that would be continuously in the kitchen. Um, wasting food. If we're not there, stuff's getting wasted, stuff's getting cooked. And not being able to dispense the, dispense the right amount, um, on the trades. Alright, Victus Food Services is combined, is, is with Combined Public Communications. That is our current, uh, phone service for the inmates. This is part of, uh, Combined Public Communications. We already have an agreement with them that we've been working with since 2020. They, um, were about to renew their, uh, contract, um, for the, for the phone services. And we make money off of that. This we won't make money off of, and it is, it is something we will have to pay for. However, that's where the proposal comes in in just a second. So we bring in staff to run the kitchen with inmates helps. They, Victus prepares the menus. They place the order as large consumers instead of a small detention center. Assume liability for food prepared, meet safe serve requirements and nutritional standards, and it's a healthier approach. The proposal is Victus Food Service, Victus Food Service has proposed to come in at our current budget to take over the food service through the end of our fiscal year this year. For the proposal, they do have a four-year contract that would, uh, that would start July first in 2026. The contract would take the meal price up from two-twenty-seven, which would be what our current, roughly what our current budget would, would support, to two-eighty-seven. And we require a budget, uh, to go up some next year, but our budget goes up every year because we don't have the buying power of, of a big, uh, facility.
But hey, before we take that slide, does that, uh, meal price include the time and mileage you have to go to pick up food and bring it back to the?
This is their meal price.
Okay. What's, what's our current?
Our, our current budget is one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand for the year. And we are, uh, last, uh, when I placed the order, uh, last week, it was two, two-thousand-four-hundred and six dollars just on the food. So we're roughly between twenty-four-hundred and three thousand, depending on which weekend food it is.
What, what were the other bids?
Uh, the other bids from other, other places?
Yeah.
So we had Skillet come in and they did a proposal as well. Their lowest price was almost three dollars a plate. I didn't get any other bids.
I think we have to have three at this amount, right?
At least.
So this is coming in as an existing contract with CPC and this is a partner. This is why it's a proposal that we're coming to council to see if we can go this route.
How, how much would that take the budget?
Still need three bids for, yeah, a change, yeah. Joni, what do you? Yeah. It's a separate bid, so, yeah.
And with those three proposals, we need to know how much it's going, it's going to take the budget up.
That's right. So you got two, correct? Yeah, just get, I'm not saying this is bad. I did, I just, you gotta have three bids.
You, you're saying we do have to go out to RFP for that. The, the, the purpose of this was we were hoping we wouldn't have to go out to RFP, but if you're saying we have to go out to RFP, we can.
I'm, I'm gonna lean to the, I'm not gonna make that call. I'm gonna lean to the county attorney on that and let her say, but I think our procurement requirements are pretty tight on that. Because it's a separate service. I mean, same company doing two different things.
No, we, we agree and we thought that that could be an answer tonight, um, that we would have to go out to RFP. They were coming in with this proposal as we can, we can keep it under your budget right now if, if you'll go ahead and sign with us. And since we're a partner company, we were told that maybe, uh, we were able to do that. But if not, we will go out to RFP. Any other questions?
Just a quick, but, but the concept of, is, of him and the council.
Very appealing. I like the concept. I'm not even saying it's a bad proposal. I just, I think we have to follow our procurement requirements so we all could end up in a bind over it.
Okay. Cause that, that's why I asked the question now, do you include the, the time that it takes your officers to go get the food, bring back the mileage and all that? Is that included in your cost of food now or is that just, they're already employed, so they're?
That's my responsibility.
Okay.
Um, I have to do that.
So that's not included, that's, that'd be even more.
That wouldn't be included.
You ever estimate how many hours your officer spends managing that kitchen and all that?
Well, it's a nonstop.
A nonstop.
And, and with, with everybody on the shift, I mean, that's your own responsibility. When they pass out foods, make sure that we're giving them proper food and everything, so. I don't thi- I don't think that you could ever measure that.
Right.
Right.
But it would freeze that way.
Yes. Though, a lot.
She'll use inmates for cooking.
Do it.
She will use the inmates for the cooking.
We would still use the inmates for, for a lot of the cleaning and prep, yes. That, that would be required because they would just have one person in there at a time.
And they, and they would come from a state facility or, or the ones that would be housed there would be doing the help?
So right now we have four, uh, five state inmates. We, we, we're slotted for ten, but I can't get the other five. Uh, we have to send them back every, so often and some of them get released. That's one of the greatest things of my job is being able to release a state guy that's done thirty, thirty-five years. So that's, that's pretty cool. But, um, but a lot of the county guys come through, family corners, they've been, been in there for, for a little while, um, they help out in the kitchen. Pretty much anybody that, that can work, can scrub pots and that. Okay. Thank y'all very much.
Captain Floyd, you are doing an outstanding job and we do appreciate it. Uh, don't say this is a bad bid. We just had to go by our process.
Got you, got you.
Uh, thank you for the presentation, excellent presentation, just, uh, need a little more information.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, item number eleven, county council may take action on matter discussed during executive session of the five PM meeting.
I'll make a motion that we add, um, to renew a land option that we previously had.
Alright, we have a motion to renew a land option on Newberry South Parcel. Do we have a second?
I, I'll second that.
Second, uh, Councilman Johnson, any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Alright, item number twelve, are there any appointments? I don't have mine yet, I'm sorry. Alright, hearing none. Public comments. Alright, Ms. Lila Cowell.
Yes. Good evening, all of you.
Good evening.
As I, a- as, as I've been driving throughout Newberry County, I have not observed any public parks for people who are, who are more or less paying taxes. And I want to know, have you all given any thoughts of building parks out in, out in the rural areas? I know that Newberry City has lots of parks, wonderful parks, but those of us who are more or less paying county taxes, we are not getting benefits for the money that we are, uh, paying. I also would like to, um, I would like to have a written report as the amount of money collected from, of property taxes and what it is used for. If I could have that done, if y'all can do that for me by the first Wednesday in December, I would love it very much. Because I think those of us who are, who are making payments, we need to know what our tax monies are being used for. So if y'all can do that for me, I will, uh, appreciate that very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cowell.
Yes?
I said, thank, I said, thank you, ma'am. Hi, Mr. Forrest Byrd, stranger. Always good to see you, Mr. Byrd.
I got a lot of things I'd like to talk about. I'm trying to think about which one I want the most at the moment. You know, I care about the county. I really do. And I care about all my crazy taxes that I pay because they're pretty high and a lot of the rest of us do too. And I'm looking at subdivisions and I watched the news and it said, we're gonna charge five thousand dollars for these houses coming in. I said, it sounds good. And I get that y'all have calculated out that it's gonna cost us about four thousand dollars or something in services. Almost sounds profitable. But then I hear Joe White telling me how much it costs per kid in the county to educate them for school. And each kid's costing us nineteen thousand dollars a year in school. Well, the county portion of that, he said, state is ten, the county's nine. So for each kid that moves into one of these houses and one of these residents, it's nine thousand dollars a year. Tyler said that generally they calculate, what, two people, two kids per house or something? I don't know, you might have said that years ago, I don't know. Anyway, I heard somewhere that they estimate a couple of kids per house. So you're looking at nine thousand dollars, just say they have one kid, that's still nine thousand dollars per house per year. And we're charging five thousand dollars in development fees. So over, so for twelve years, our costs are close to a hundred thousand bucks. And we're charging five thousand dollars. So over that twelve years, all the other money's coming out of who? All the rest of us who are paying taxes in the county. So as we add these developments, we're adding traffic, we're adding congestion, we're adding costs. We're adding pollution, we're adding sewer lines. We're adding traffic. I mean, I look at Leon on his tractor, hey, you're not going down the road in your tractor pretty soon. Because where they're gonna stick developments is in our neighborhood and in our area. And we're gonna get all cluttered up and congested with all these little developments. I lived in Irma for a long time. Hey, Coldstream was a wonderful neighborhood when it was first developed. On a golf course, great thing. It's not anymore. All those subdivisions go down. They end up being drains and expenses.
Alright, Mr. Byrd.
Have me shut up. I'll shut up.
Thank you, thank you, sir. I don't know if I can read James. I can't, can't make out the last name, I'm sorry.
James Cybert, uh, two-fourteen Osprey Point Lane.
Yes, sir.
Um, I just wanted to, you know, I got a ton of respect for you guys. I really do. I know you're trying your best, okay, but I don't think you really know what's coming at you. I really don't. Okay, just a quick, I've spoken to you ad nauseam about this. I was born and raised in central New Jersey, okay, and I moved into my house in ninety-one. At that time, it was a group one school like a Whitmire, okay? When I left twenty-seven years later, it was a five A, okay? Enormous growth. With that came two grammar schools, a middle school and a high school. I was in a town, not the county, okay? Plus three pumping stations and miles and miles of loans, okay? So all of this stuff I've heard, then I, there's no infrastructure being talked about, okay? And what do you think happened to my property tax? It tripled, okay? You had two builders, Habnani and the Toll Brothers, okay, publicly traded ones. And I don't know who's gonna start building here, but they have attorneys that are looking at these codes and trying to figure out how to get around them, okay? You guys are all public servants, okay? Not only that, you've probably been very successful in your careers. And when you do, and because of that, was because you were reactive, I mean proactive, not reactive. And if we're gonna sit here and say we can change it later, that's being reactive, okay? And you're all, I can guarantee, very successful in what you have done and you weren't reactive in doing that, okay? You know, they, the planning board talking about trees and setbacks, trees and setbacks don't pay property tax, okay? People do, okay? And one of the things that I really wanted to say tonight, not talk to Mr. Fulmer about it quite often, is when they start building, and that's coming, okay? I think it can be very much regulated, and I'm not sure that that's what we're doing here, but all you have to do is take a ride down Siegel Lane and Osprey Point Lane, okay? Because they're building out by me, okay? Go look at that road and see what's coming, okay? So again, you, this is your guys' legacy. Twenty years from now, you're, none of you, none of you guys are gonna be on here. But all of the things that you're doing now is gonna have something to do with that. So just remember that and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. Alright, comments, uh, from the county administrator.
Yeah, I, uh, I'll be recoming. Uh, I just want to give you all a heads up. We did get bids in for the Prosperity Park improvements. That's one of our CPST projects. Those bids came in on Tuesday and are being reviewed. And we'll have a recommendation ready for y'all at the November nineteenth meeting on a award of construction contract. Um, we also, uh, have those safe streets for all, uh, engineering proposals in. Those have been reviewed and interviews are being set up, so we should have a recommendation for y'all probably, probably at the December seventeenth meeting, uh, just to ensure that we can get the interviews in with the consultants that have responded. Uh, and we do have the specifications and drawings for the roof replacement of the museum building and other CPST projects. So we're very close to being able, able to advertise that for bids.
Very good.
Good progress.
Very good progress. Like to hear it. Do we have any council with any comments? Hearing none, I would like to thank St. Phillips Fire Department and all our volunteers for all they do for Newberry County. They, again, they are the backbone of our community and we sure appreciate it. We hear you. I, I've been here all my life, so I, 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 I love, I love Newberry as well, so we hear you. We're doing the best we can. Alright, future meetings. Veterans Day, November eleventh, offices closed. Newberry County Council Work Session, November nineteenth at five PM. Newberry County Council, November nineteenth at six PM. Thanksgiving Holiday, November twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, offices closed. Newberry County Economic Development Committee, December first at five PM. Newberry County Finance Committee, December eighth at five PM. Newberry County Council Work Session, December seventeenth at five PM. Newberry County Council, December seventeenth at six PM. Christmas Holidays, December twenty-four through twenty-six, offices will be closed. That, do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Smith. Second by Councilman Skirp. Do I, any discussion? All in favor? We are adjourned.